...nineteen. Appreciate you all being here. The first item on the agenda is to call the roll and ask our township manager and secretary to call the roll.
Certainly, Mr. D'Amelio.
Here.
Mr. Oliva.
Here.
Mr. McCloskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. McGarretty.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
I believe Mr. Holmes is on his way, and Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Thank you, Larry. Could you all please rise and join our Chief of Police in the Pledge of Allegiance?
What allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as for all.
Thank you, Chief. Item number three on the agenda, Police Department, we have to hire a new entry-level police officer, and we have two promotions to consider this evening. I would ask our, one of our Civil Service Commission members and the Administrator to the Civil Service Commission, Janet Pacello, to come forward and to present the candidates for the Board's consideration.
As you're well aware, we have one vacancy for entry level, one for sergeant, and one for lieutenant. For the entry-level position, I'm going to read from a certified list that was approved by the Board on April the ninth, two thousand eighteen. Top name is James Jones Drew Schiller Robert Flormer.
Do I have a motion?
To accept the list?
Second.
Actually, the list does not be accepted. It's a motion to appoint, I have a motion to appoint.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion to appoint an individual?
Yes.
James Jones.
I second it.
Moved by Commissioner D'Amelio, seconded by Commissioner McGarretty. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes still not here, and Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
James?
Congratulations, James.
Congratulations, James. Commissioner, James is twenty-seven years old, a lifelong resident of Haverford Township. He graduated from Haverford High School, was a second-team Al Delco wrestler. James attended Penn State, working towards a degree in criminal justice. He graduated from the Delaware County Police Academy in December of two thousand and fourteen. Has worked full-time with the Delaware County Sheriff's Office since April two thousand and fifteen, where he served as a deputy assigned to the extradition unit. He was on the Honor Guard, also a member of the Delaware County Response Team. James also worked as a part-time police officer for the Borough of GlenOlens since January two thousand and seventeen, and we welcome him to Haverford Township Police Department. James?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The next, you want to do it at the end, Chief, or you want to, we'll break, we'll break, okay. So, item B here is a, entertain a motion to accept the civil service lieutenant promotion list.
Make a motion to accept the civil service lieutenant list.
Second.
Any discussion?
You're accepting the lieutenant's list?
Yeah, you want to read the list now?
Okay.
That's it?
Take a vote on that.
Should we accept it first, or you want to give us the name?
What we're going to do is, on behalf of the Civil Service Commission, I'm presenting to the Board a certified eligibility list for the position of lieutenant. That's the list that has to, you must vote on to approve.
Okay, so, do we need names for that, for that, or we just?
Vote on the list first.
Vote on the list, okay, so we have a motion, it's been moved and seconded.
Motion to accept that list.
Okay, I'll just take a simple voice vote here, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Ayes, carry, nine zero. I'm sorry, eight zero, one absence, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
The three names I have, first place is Craig Scott Eugene Nolan Dennis Donnelly.
Make a motion to accept Craig Scott as a lieutenant for the Haverford Township Police Department?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner McGarretty and seconded by Commissioner D'Amelio. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Lieutenant?
Congratulations.
Sergeant Lieutenant Scott was hired by the Haverford Township Police Department in July of two thousand, after graduating from West Chester University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. During the time he was assigned as a patrol officer, he was also a field training officer, a member of the Delaware County DCR team, a bike patrol officer, police Honor Guard member, and became a member of the Haverford Township SWAT team. Craig was promoted to sergeant in October two thousand and five, and was assigned to Patrol Division. During that time, Craig continued his extra duties on the SWAT team, and also became a sniper on the SWAT team. He was assigned as a member of the Delaware County Hazardous Materials SWAT team, a firearms instructor, a rifle instructor, a standard field sobriety test instructor. In his capacity as instructor of SFST, he has taught hundreds of police officers from around the county. In two thousand and eleven, Craig was assigned as the overall team leader on the SWAT team. In his capacity as team leader, he's attended numerous schools at the Center for Domestic Preparedness located in Addison, Alabama, the National Tactical Officer Association, and the Department of Homeland Security. In two thousand and twelve, Craig became one of the only few officers in the state to be certified as a drug recognition expert. A drug recognition expert, or drug recognition evaluator, DRE, is a police officer trained to recognize impairment in officers under the influence of drugs other than or in addition to alcohol. From two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fourteen, Craig served as a supervisor in a special operations unit. In that capacity, he was a member of the Delaware County Fatal Accident Response Team, in charge of the department's training program, and was assigned to a supervisor for traffic during the US Open held in Marion in two thousand and thirteen. In two thousand and fourteen, Craig returned to Patrol Division as supervisor, where he continued to mentor young officers and continued his duties as a DRE. Firearms instructor and SWAT team leader, sniper supervisor, and supervisor in the Honor Guard. During his career, Craig has earned four unit accommodations. Craig is married to his wife Maureen, and has three children, Jack and Ellen Carr.
Next is the sergeant promotion?
Yeah, yeah, I'm a previous list.
Yes, exactly. Previously-accepted list.
Okay, for the sergeant's position, I'm going to read the names from a certified list that was approved by the Board on March the twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. And continuing on, first would be Brian Coleman, Corey Watkins, Edward Minzer.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Motion to appoint Brian Coleman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarretty. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarretty?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sergeant. Congratulations.
Sergeant Coleman was hired by the Haverford Township Police Department in December two
thousand and seven. Brian graduated from West Chester University in two thousand and two with a bachelor's degree in liberal arts with a modern elementary education. After his graduation, he was hired by the Philadelphia Police Department in two thousand and three, and his last assignment prior to coming to Haverford Township was with the East Division Task Force. Since coming to Haverford Township, Brian has served as field training officer, an officer in charge, firearm instructor. In two thousand and nine, he became a member of the SWAT team, which he currently serves as assistant team leader. Brian was assigned to the DA Task Force in two thousand and nine. In two thousand and twelve, Brian spent a year in investigations during temporary assignment. In two thousand and fifteen, he was assigned to Special Operations Unit. During his time there, he was assigned with updating the department's response to active shooter program. Brian and Officer Lane instructed over a thousand police officers along with civilian staff of the township schools in methods how to respond to an active shooter. Brian is certified by Texas Tech, the Department of Homeland Security, PA State Police, the National Tactical Officers Association, active shooter response methods. He was certified to instruct patrol response to active shooter by the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Training Commission, which is a certified course which Steve and Brian wrote. Brian's also attended SWAT Commander Leadership School instructed by National Tactical Officers Association. Brian's been assigned to Detective Division since two thousand and eighteen, and handled over a hundred and fifty cases last year. He's received one unit combination. He's married to his wife Jill, they have four children, Ellen, Kyle, Carly, and Jack. Congratulations.
Mrs. Wild, she's taking care of the badges. Just take a moment to, for myself and for the Police Department, to thank you for your support over the years. It shows that your concern and care for the township and for the Police Department to allow us to continue to grow and get the best people available for the job. Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. We're going to take a couple-minute recess, just, we have twenty-six items on the agenda, most of which I'm sure you're not here to listen to, so we'll clear the room, whoever wants to leave, and then we'll reconvene.
Yeah, and John?
Reconvene, if we could, thank you. Turning to agenda item number four, is the Township Auditor Update. Ross Anderson?
I have reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction.
No jokes this month? Okay. Thank you, Ross.
Sure he hasn't been kidnapped?
Item number five on the agenda, Commissioner Committee Updates, are any updates from any of the commissioners from the committees? Okay. Item number six is the Citizens Forum. We have twenty minutes allotted for registered speakers to speak on agenda items, and we also have twenty minutes allotted for members of the audience to speak as well on anything on the agenda. And then, anything that's not on the agenda, anyone in the audience can address that. At the end, agenda item number twenty-four is a continuance of the Citizens Forum. So, as of four o'clock this afternoon, we had two registered speakers, the first of which is Mike Barry. If you could come forward and just give your name and address, up at the podium if you would, thank you. State your name and address. Yeah, that's right.
My name is Mike Barry, and I live at four thirteen Sagamore Road. I would like to talk tonight, talk, first of all, I want to thank the Board for allowing me the time to speak, and I would like to take the time to talk about the proposed site at eleven oh five Arlington Road. When I hear that existing buildings are being torn down, and new facilities are being built, my concern is, will that result in a tax increase for the residents of the township? Speaking for myself, I am a senior citizen who just recently retired, and my wife and I would like to live in our home for the rest of our life, and I would not like to get into a situation where we'd be taxed out of our, out of our home. Also, it is my understanding that one of the proposals for that site would be the building of a new library. If the Board decides to build a new library in that site, can I ensure the residents there will be ample off-street parking, so that there would not be a parking problem in the surrounding streets of that area?
Thank you, Mr. Barry.
Thank you very much.
I'll address your, I'll address your comments at the end of the forum. Next is Lindsey Smith, is on the agenda.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Lindsey Smith, I live at two twenty-one East Hathaway Lane in Havertown. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. I speak tonight on behalf of many Haverford Township families who have been affected by the pending closure of the Brookline School and FSS Elwin preschool and elementary programs housed in that building, along with other parents and interested members of the community who recognize the value, quality, early childhood education opportunities. First, we want to thank you. We appreciate the township's efforts in working with our parent group, the school board, the YMCA, and other community and private organizations to provide summer camp and locations for kindergarten enrichment, before and after care, and as well as a new home for the programs that have been housed in the Brookline Building. We acknowledge all of the behind-the-scenes work that has taken place over the past few weeks in searching for a resolution to this difficult issue. Your help, patience, and continued communication with concerned constituents is greatly appreciated. After learning more about the Brookline Building over the last few weeks, we would like to acknowledge that our parent group strongly supports the transfer of the Brookline School, and believes this action is in the best interest of the township, the school district, and the community at large. We look forward to working with the township to explore and provide feedback about possible options for this space moving forward, as well as to support organizations in our community that wish to provide high-quality early childhood educational opportunities. We are aware that there are township zoning regulations in place that may hinder such organizations as FSS Elwin from finding the space needed to continue providing full-day secular preschool and kindergarten education programs that are important to many families in our community. It is our understanding that zoning regulations prohibit these programs from operating in facilities other than churches or other religious institutions. As we all know, institutional space is already at a premium in the township. At the same time, families are frustrated by the insufficient supply of high-quality, full-day, early learning, and enrichment opportunities that meet the needs of working families, an important niche that is filled by FSS Elwin. Our parent group strongly supports changes to the zoning regulations to enable more competitive options for current and future families with young children, a factor that we believe would benefit the long-term economic growth of Haverford Township. Furthermore, it appears that the township would benefit through additional tax revenue from commercial properties and for-profit organizations. As a large group of parents and community members, we offer our assistance in any way possible to continue to expand opportunities for early childhood education in this township. Thank you again for your help and support. Sincerely, myself, Lindsey Smith, Laura Crispin, Allison Groff, Joel Muterick, and one hundred and fifty-seven other constituents who have signed this letter. And if I can, can I leave this letter with you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our registered speakers. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item?
Over here, Andy.
Sure. Come up, young man. State your name, I think we all know you pretty well, and your address.
Good evening. Chris Connell, five nineteen Kenmore Road. And I'm surprised no one else is getting up to speak tonight about eleven oh five Arlington Road. But I am a resident on Kenmore Road thirty years, I've been a resident of the township for over fifty-five years, I'll just should say over fifty, doesn't really matter. First and foremost, I'm here representing my family, not, not the neighborhood, but my wife and I support the purchase of the property at eleven oh five Arlington Road. And I understand there are no definite plans at this time, but in order for there to be plans, you actually have to take the property first. And even though it's maybe a one dollar, that one dollar actually represents hundreds of thousands of dollars, or millions of dollars in the future. So, moving forward, I would like to say that the township does purchase it tonight, that when you put together your committee to, to go over that property, to see what you're doing with it, I just hope that there is definite transparency, and that there are a lot of people, I know Commissioner, you have a neighborhood meeting with it and what have you, and I greatly appreciate that. It is a great property, once you have recreation, never get rid of it. So, what you do with the property, once we get it, as, as the taxpayers, I hope that there is an awful lot of input into it. And I thank you very much, though, for supporting, for, for purchasing this property. I think it's a definite need to, so it's in your hands, our hands, as opposed to any commercialism that would go there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Connell. Anyone else wish to speak? Please state your name and your address, please.
Scott Lean, I live at four thirty-one Sagamore Road. Live literally across the street, and I'm just concerned, it seems as if there doesn't seem to be a plan, or the public's led to believe that there's not a plan, but there's technically bids out on the street as of last week for six million dollars worth of work to start June third on this project, while an architect hasn't been slated for the project, but it's definitely out on the street, on in-site and pen bid. So, whether or not the project does move forward, you know, my, my concern is just, if there is asbestos in that building, and the building will be torn down, what type of remediation would be taken? Because I have two young children that live across the street, and I'm just, you know, in the middle of summertime, that debris is just going to be in the middle of the air, and I'm probably like, less than five hundred feet from the building, so, that's just my concern, that's all.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else wish to speak?
Will Belcher, five thirty-six Kathmer Road. I found out about this a couple weeks ago, and was obviously excited at first, because I heard that potentially the Brookline School may be renovated and transformed into something else than what it is today. And then I found out that the proposals were to demolish the building, based on the state of disrepair, and a "scratch-built" is the quote that I got, would be easier. The building's a hundred and five years old. I put out a petition, two hundred people have signed it. I plan to go door-to-door to get more, but I would hate to see the structure torn down. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
My name is Tucker Dunn, I live at ten fifteen Arlington Road. I'm on the corner of Kenmore and Arlington, right next to the school. I agree with all the statements that are here, and I hope that transparency is the number one thing that we get with this. I was encouraged to hear from several of you up here, that you want to keep it as a green space or a library, and I hope that is the case. Some of the other pieces that I would have concern with the taking down of the school is ideally any type of traffic patterns, not just the parking, but as we know, cars like to go extremely fast down the road. If there was a way to keep that as a school zone, or some type of way of keeping traffic at a, at a better pace, that would be something I would want to take into consideration. Also, my young daughter has become accustomed to our street being a one-way road, and where we all have to learn to adjust with kids going to the schoolyard. I want to make sure that we try and keep traffic patterns as best we can, so keeping to a one, a one-way street would be ideal for us. As far as if the structure needs to come down, and I know we're a far way off of this, I would like something to ideally be kept with the time period of the structure that is there. It is a beautiful structure, I think we all can agree that I wish the inside looked like it does from the outside. So, ideally, being next door to it, I'm excited about what it has to offer the township, but at the same time, I would want it to ideally fit in with the town and the, the time period that it was built in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Please.
My name's Dave McElwain, four twelve Kenmore, which is about a half-block down the street from the school building. I've been there twenty-eight years. I've been a Havertown resident over fifty years. And one thing I always said to my wife, even though the building's not in big use right now, is it's a beautiful building. I just, I don't know, it inspires me when I see that building, and it seems a shame, and I'm sure the cost is the key to what we're going to do moving forward as far as renovations or tear-down. I like the concept of a library there. The current library, you're well aware, I think the parking restrictions at the current library are just untenable, frankly. And I think the, the new property, if it were to end up having a library in it, although, yes, a little further from the school, would really avail itself of good parking, just like this new facility. The old property here was not good for parking. Now, you can park down the hill, walk up the steps. I just think that I'd like to see an emphasis on keeping the building there, and find a feasible way to make that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, my name is Stacy Dean, I live at five thirty-eight Sagamore. First, wanted to thank the Commissioners for the advance notice of the property. My family in particular is extremely supportive of the township stepping in to purchase the property, to avoid, as Mr. Connell said, other commercial ideas. I think that, in having spoken to several of the neighbors, I think that a lot, I would echo a lot of the sentiments that have already been said. It's an amazing piece of property that brings a lot of potential to not only the entire community, but also to the immediate residents within the immediate blocks. Some of our primary concerns have already been stated, but transparency of what's planned, and also the environmental and health ways in which the building may be taken down, is certainly a first and foremost concern for the immediate neighborhood. And I agree with the safety and traffic issues that have already been brought up, and thank you very much again, and hoping that we will continue the transparency of the property and the best use of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone, anyone else wish to? Does anyone, anyone else wish to speak? Let me just make some general comments, and then I'm going to ask our township engineer, Dave Penoni, to make some comments as well, because he's done a study, which I think it's important to share with all of you as well. First off, no decision has been made as to what the end-use will be for this property. We are restricted under this agreement with the school board to, it's got to be used for public benefit. It cannot be repurposed and sold for commercial or torn down and developed for residential purposes, so it has to be used for public benefit. That's number one. So, there are limited options that go with that. But I can assure you, on Chris Connell's and other comments about transparency, this board will be extremely transparent in how we approach this project. We will continue to solicit your input and your ideas and suggestions every step of the way. You can be assured of that. Just to touch on a couple of points that were made, I know of no bid that was put out for $6 million. I know certainly Harreford Township hasn't put any bid out for $6 million for the school. I don't think the school district did either. So, I don't know what's been, where that information's coming from, but it's not coming from Harreford Township or the school district, when we have representatives from the school district here, the school district president, and several board members. So, also, to Lindsey's comments about, we appreciate your passion for early childhood education. We'll certainly look at the zoning issues that you raised. Kelly Kirk's here, and I think she took note of that, our zoning officer. And I guess what I'll do is turn it over to Dave, maybe you can comment. I think, I think one of the issues the school board had, and we've had conversations with the school board for the better part of a year now, going back and forth, and the school board has decided that obviously it wasn't appropriate to continue to use as a school and is no longer appropriate to use for commercial purposes either, and it would require extensive, extensive renovations if we were to try to repurpose that building or adaptively reuse it. So, David, would you just make a couple of comments, and then if you would, also talk about the asbestos issue, because I think a couple of people made that same concern about if we were to demo this building, how that would be done and how we... Do you have any other, any other board members want to make any comments beyond what I said?
I would like to comment. The people who spoke tonight, basically, I'm in agreement with all the, what the people spoke about. Chris Connell, he lives in the 500 block. He's been there for 30-some years. I'm in the 400 block. I've been there 74 years. I went to Brookline School, and basically, I think that the building itself should stay if we can fix it up, or another thing we could do is ask the school district, you know, they want to sell it to us for a dollar, but if they were going to take down the school, take the school down and then sell it to us for a dollar. I don't know why we would spend $400,000 taking it down, when I hope we don't even take it down. So, that's my comment, and I won't go to, I'm not going to vote to purchase this until the fact that... And also, I do have a little thing against the school district, because I've asked them. The township was willing to give the crossing guards $2 raise increase, and the school district didn't want to go along with that. So, that has me very discouraged with the district, too. So, until they break loose on that promise, it's up to them to say yes to that $2 increase freeze. And these poor crossing guards are out there, and you know what we've had the last week out there with the cold weather, the rain, the snow. So, that's where I feel, I just want everybody to know that, and then Mr. Penoni can comment on that, but that's my feelings, and that's where I am. And until that time, I will vote no.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
May I suggest that Ms. Penoni come up to the podium?
Yeah, why don't you come up to, that's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Andy?
Yes.
This gentleman over here has got his hand up.
Can, can... You're going to have to hold off. You have, let your wait, we'll let you come back in.
So, as the board members, we, as you mentioned, in discussions, started maybe over a year ago, so we have looked at the building. We've been inside the building multiple occasions. We also had...
Identify yourself as, and the firm, so people know who you are.
Sorry. David Penoni, Penoni Associates Township Engineer. So, we've been in the building a couple of times. I believe somebody said the building is about 105 years old. That's what our records indicate. Building around 1913. It's situated on a property of about 1.7 acres, which is about 75,000 square feet. The building itself is 44,000 square foot, roughly, and it's on three levels, the lowest level, which is about halfway underground. The district's been, frankly, very accommodating and sharing their information and working with us, my firm, to pull together some information on the building. And probably the most relevant piece of information that we got from the district in terms of order, magnitude, or cost to rebuild, renovate the building, came from a 2010 schematic design that the district had done. The district did a 2010 design, schematic design, to do a renovation of the building, not to change, not to change footprints, not to change walls, but to take what they're now, new mechanicals, new electricals, new plumbing, new ceilings, and an elevator. And in 2010, that was estimated to be almost $7 million in 2010 dollars, and in today's dollars, that's almost $9 million, so about $8.9 million of costs, all in, to renovate the building. So, basically, take the building that was today and bring it up to today's standards, not to repurpose it, not to do any adaptive...
Not to move any wall inside, right?
Right. Not to change any walls.
Yeah.
Yep. It was a good set, we looked at it, a good set of schematic designs, and in our opinion, a good estimate. So, that's a good logical order of magnitude.
But it's pretty hard to reuse, and the walls are pretty thick, I assume?
Um, I mean, the outside walls are extremely thick. I mean, it's a major rebuilding.
Yeah.
It's a well-built. Well, it's a 1913 building. It's similar to Manoa, I mean, similar to Chestnut Walls, similar to Manoa. Abatement, if the building gets demolished, whether it's this building or the old police station, which was on this site, what happens before you demolish a building is you remediate. You remove ACMs, asbestos-containing materials. Those materials get removed, they get bagged, and they get taken off-site prior to demolition starting. Exactly what we did here. We've done a few other demo projects in the township, so that's standard operational procedure, so that material, that problem, it'll be removed ahead of time before demolition. Any questions?
Any question for the board? Hey, you have one other comment? Anybody have any, did you want to make another comment? Thank you, David.
Will Belcher, 536 Cathmere, again. I just was curious, do you plan on bringing on an architect to review this building? I mean, I know Mr. Penoni's a civil engineer, but...
I don't know that, I don't know that we will. I mean, the board will have to make that decision, but it seems to me that if the school district found it cost prohibitive to somehow renovate the building, it's probably going to be cost prohibitive for us as well. So, it's, the end result is, you know, probably a new library or open space in a pocket park of some sort.
Okay, so it's been decided by the board?
Nothing's been decided. I'm just saying they're kind of, you know, we can't, we can't resell it, okay? We can't redevelop it. And if it's a $9 million price tag to, just to redo the mechanicals and get it up to par, that's, that's, the school district didn't want to take it on, I don't see, I'm just speaking as one person.
Okay.
I don't know how...
Thank you.
The board will have to discuss it, and again, we'll be discussing it in public and seek your input and...
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, if I may, because I sort of wear two hats that are relevant to the building. One is Chair of the Property Committee, and the other is Chair of the School Board Committee. With regard to the Property Committee, for those who recall when we worked on building this building and going through planning, which included at that time the library, the committee met, we had public presentations, and we accepted community input. I anticipate that we will follow that same process with regard to whatever is decided with the Brookline School for future development. I see no reason to change a process that worked well in that time frame. With regard to the school board, I just want to comment that I've chaired the School Board Committee for many years, and it was not until about a year ago when the School Board Committee and the school board actually, for the first time, were able to meet. We'd requested in the past, but thanks to some changes on the school board, we now have what I believe is an extremely cordial, professional, and exceptionally good working relationship, not only between our board members and theirs, but between our township manager and the superintendent. The decision to acquire this building was because we all agreed that it was in the best interests of the township, who are taxpayers to both the school board and to this board and to the township. It's the same residents, it's the same tax base, that the best use of that property was to keep it as a public asset, and that's what we intend to do. That's what the deed and the transfer will require us to do, and we intend to do that, rather than allow it to go into commercial or some other use. But just to say that it, I believe there is an exceptionally good new spirit of cooperation between our board and the school board, and that is a good thing for the community, because the best thing we can all do as elected officials, no matter which constituency we have to deal with, is to do what's best. And this transfer is, I think, a really good example, and I thank them. We have the president here and other members, and I would just thank them for that.
If I could just add to what Commissioner Siegel was saying, when we did, Commissioner Siegel chaired the committee, we had 13 public meetings on this township building and the renovation of the library. 13 public meetings where everybody got to talk and say whatever they wanted about the building until people were exhausted and tired of going to meetings for them. This process is going to be public. Everybody's going to have their say. Everybody's going to be able to contribute what they want to do. We're not doing anything, and we don't do things behind the scenes. We're not allowed to, and we, and there is no bids out. We have no bids out on this. We can't put any bids out. Those have to be done in public. There is no $6 million bid. Anything over $25,000 has to be, this board has to ratify that, and it has not ratified anything. It is now tonight, for the first time, is going to ratify the purchase of the property. So, we have no plans. Right now, it'll all be done in public.
Any other commissioner like to comment?
The Brookline School falls in the 8th Ward, and I try to be as transparent as possible since we learned from the school board that this property would become available. When we learned, I mean, my commitment was to preserve the open space. We have a park there, and nothing should happen to that park. Whether the library, we move the library there or not, is something to be decided. I'm not committed either way from that. It's something we should explore. We've got a library that has 16 parking places, and we certainly, if we're going to put a lot of money into a library, we've got to consider that. But I think, as the other commissioners have said, all we're doing tonight is transferring the property. We're going to preserve the open space there. We may expand the open space if the library doesn't move, but there's, again, everything is be as transparent as possible.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes, Mr. Lewis. I was involved with Commissioner Hart last year, as I was in your position last year. So, we had some negotiations with the school board, and I would like to compliment and further go on in practical sense to the citizens that are listening in here tonight. The school board could have sold that. It's zoned as institutional. There are several organizations in the area that wanted that property to put an institutional development in there, whatever use it was, because it is zoned that way would have been a buy-right thing. But the school board realized that you, and us, and them are all the same. So, selling that and not letting the township get it was taking money out of there. And the fact that they're, we're transferring this property for a minimal amount indicates their understanding that we've already paid for the building. The taxpayers of the township of Harreford, whether through school taxes or municipal taxes, have paid for that property. They recognize that. To their credit, I'd like to thank Dr. Rucci, the school board, and everybody involved in their organization to do that. They realize that that's a cornerstone of the Brookline neighborhood, and Dr. Hart was adamant that we're not going to take any footprint, just like we took no footprint of the ballfields back here to build this municipal complex here. So, that's, our goal, our stated goal, we've said it in public, is to maintain the open space that's there. Anything that would go there building-wise would not exceed the footprint of the current building. And again, I think from an architectural point of view, if we ever get to the point that we decide to build anything there, other than open space, would be conducive to the neighborhood and blend in with the cornerstone of the neighborhood. And that's our commitment. We've made that commitment, and we're making it in writing to the transfer to the school district, that that property will only be used for the benefit of the residents that have for township, and not an institutional development to an outside development. And I thank the school board publicly for that. I thank them for their understanding. I thank them for their cooperation in maintaining the property that's still owned. You could say school district or township, it's still owned by the residents of this township. So, thank you very much to those members of the school board that are here, and I don't see a doctor, but make sure she convey our thank you to her as well for her leadership and shepherding that through a difficult process on both your board and our board. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wexler. Any other...
Just one, just one thing. It's sort of stepping beyond what I've tried to say, that we don't need to move beyond the fact that we're just purchasing the property tonight, but just because Commissioner Wexler mentioned it, that it was zoned institutional, I think that's what Ms. Smith was talking about very eloquently, that giving our changing dynamics in this town of parents who are in need of early childhood education, we need to take a look at our zoning code, and I'll talk about that more later as well, but just to, as it fit into the conversation.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I too want to thank the school board. I concur with my colleagues on how they obviously thought of the township, the community, the street there. So, I appreciate everything that you've done so far.
So, thank you all for your input, and once again, be assured this will be a transparent, very public process going forward, and we'll need to solicit your input and suggestions along the way. So, with that, we'll now turn our attention to the, back to the agenda, and we'll, item number seven is the approval of the minutes.
Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Make a motion to adopt the reorganization meeting minutes of January 7th, 2019, and the regular meeting minutes of January 14th, 2019.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Oliva. Just take a voice vote here, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Nice carry. Thank you. Agenda item number eight, approval of the warrants. Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number two of 2019 totaling $3,854,557.69, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for January 10 of 2019 in the amount of $896,083.53. The general sewer fund payroll for January 24th, 2019 in the amount of $657,129.95. General sewer fund payroll for February 7th, 2019 in the amount of $628,667.28. General fund dispersments, number two of 2019 in the amount of $1,438,741.96. Sewer fund dispersments, number two of 2019 in the amount of $42,437.45. Community development block grant fund dispersment, number two of 2019 in the amount of $82,274.46. Capital projects fund dispersment, number two of 2019 in the amount of $99,494.97. And a credit card statement ending January 27th, 2019 in the amount of $9,728.09.
Second.
Second by?
Commissioner Oliva.
Commissioner Oliva.
Mr. President, our township auditor has reviewed these warrants. Any questions these warrants raised or raised by him to our township staff, and those questions were answered to his satisfaction, as he reported earlier tonight? It's his recommendation that we approve these, and it is my recommendation that we approve these as well.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, any questions? If not, call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Agenda item number nine, cell tower lease agreement, second reading.
Motion to adopt second reading of ordinance P. 1, 2019, authorizing the township manager to execute documents for T-Mobile Northeast LLC amending lease agreement for cell towers at 3500 Darby Road.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hart. Commissioner Hart, any discussion, any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 10, traffic, second reading.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-3, 2019, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways, parking on public property, adding subsection G, making it unlawful for any authorized person, sorry, making it unlawful for any unauthorized person to park any motor vehicle on the parking lots of the Haverford Township Municipal Complex 1010, 1014, 1018 Darby Road, except for township business.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva.
It is worth noting township business includes spectating our sporting events here at Veterans Field and the stadium, but anybody else using it for anything that isn't associated with our recreation or our township business is prohibited.
Any other discussion, questions? Please call a roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 11, Brookline School Acquisition, second reading.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-14, 2019, authorizing the acquisition of real property located at 1105 Arlington Road, Havertown, Pennsylvania, subject to review and acceptance of the related contracts by the township solicitor.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Waxler. Any additional discussion or questions?
Clarifications, P-4, I believe Commissioner Hart said P-14.
P-4, okay, thank you. Any other discussion, questions?
Mr. President, no discussions. I didn't speak before when my colleagues were addressing, but they've all raised excellent points that it is, it would be irresponsible of our township to turn down this opportunity. In a township where we are starved for space, in a township where we have more and more demand for public use of space, and the opportunity the school district has provided to us for free, I mean, for a dollar, is an opportunity that I would consider to be a breach of our fiduciary duty up here to our constituents not to take advantage of. There's a lot of talk about what we can or can't do with the property. What we clearly are committing not to do is to turn it into a commercial enterprise, and I think that will satisfy everybody. Whatever else we do, it will not satisfy everyone in the township, but our goal is to do what's best for the township as a whole. I have very strong feelings about what I'd like to do with that building, but I will share those with the public when we all discuss those things. But I consider it my duty for us to accept this building from the school district, and I think it would be a real abdication of our duties if we turned it down.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, I'd like to bring up the fact of what Mr. Holmes just said, but I think it would be only fair if the people knew at least one of two things. Number one, before we vote on this, if the building is going to come down, and number two, what's going to go in? I mean, that's plain and simple. So we're voting on something we don't know what we're voting on.
We're simply, we're voting to, we're voting to acquire the building, and no other decision has been made, so we're going to be acquiring it for a dollar, and then the decision as to what the use will be.
What we believe might go in there, but we're not saying what's going in there. We don't know if it's going to be.
We don't know, but the options are very limited. So it's either going to be, it's either going to be a library.
One of the options, Andy, we could put it out to the public.
I'm not sure we have the luxury of time, because I think the school district is anxious to, and they've also given notice to the tenants of the building informally, that their lease expires at the end of July, so anyway. I'm sorry, Andy. The school year, I guess, is what matters, yeah. Any other comments or questions, discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Agenda item number 12, Property Maintenance Code, first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-5, 2019, amending and supplementing Chapter 58 Building Construction, Article 1 Building Code, Section 58-2B, additions, deletions, and modifications, and Article 2 Property Maintenance Code, Section 58-3A, adoption of standards and modification of standards.
We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any discussion, any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 13, Appointment of a New Emergency Management Coordinator.
Motion to adopt resolution 2017, 2019, appointing John Biola for Haverford Township Police Department to serve as Emergency Management Coordinator.
Second.
By Commissioner McGarrett, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion, any comments, questions? If not, call, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 14, 2019 County Aid Application.
President, make a motion to adopt resolution number 2119-2019, authorizing the township manager to submit a 2019 county aid application for the 2019 road program.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Waxler, seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any other discussion, questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 15, 2019 Mowing Agreement with PennDOT.
Hey, okay.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Oliva.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2120, 2009, I'm sorry, 2009, authorizing the township manager to enter into an agreement with PennDOT for the 2019 mowing.
Second.
A question on that, Andy, is that, where's the mowing on that, Larry?
That's for us to do all the medial strips on state roads.
How about out here?
As well, Darby Road, Westchester Pike.
It's 31st, 34th.
Are they going to continue doing that here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 16 is the professional fee schedule.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes?
President, I move that we adopt, I'm sorry, I move we approve resolution number 2121 of 2019, reflecting the 2019 professional consultants' fee schedule.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Holmes, seconded by Commissioner Siegel.
Yeah, we talked in depth, I'd say, last week. We went over the individual fees. I think they are quite reasonable, and as I joked last week, a reflection of our 800-pound gorilla status, as opposed to the lack of value of the professionals that we are imposing those fees on. We rarely change them, and when we do, we change them three or four dollars at a time, so they are quite reasonable, and it's my recommendation that we adopt the schedule as amended.
Any other discussion, questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 17, 2019 Comprehensive Fee Schedule.
Chairman, I'd like to adopt the Haverford Township Comprehensive 2019 Fee Schedule. Oh, resolution to 2122, 2019.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner D'Amelio, seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any discussion, any questions?
We, I wasn't at the last meeting, January 24, when the Comprehensive Committee met. Kelly?
This is just.
Oh, this is just a fee schedule, I'm sorry.
This is the fee schedule.
What I do want to say is we need to, we need to meet again, I think, if that's okay.
That's something, the comprehensive plan.
Not the fee schedule.
Yeah, you're talking about the comprehensive plan.
That's right.
Yeah. Any other questions, discussion?
Well, if, again, this is something we talked about last week to some detail. I think it's worth noting, this schedule has, I'm going to guess, about maybe 250 different fees, fewer than five of them are changing, some of them are brand new, for instance, police body camera footage, or police, and then redaction that's necessary by law associated with that, sketch plans and lot line changes, which have never been before part of our fee schedule, and the removal of special event banner fees, as we are now not allowing those in the township anywhere, so, anywhere over the roadways. So, once again, the most important thing out of this comprehensive fee schedule for people to understand is that these fees are not changing. Ninety-eight percent of these fees are remaining as they've been in the past, and our township continues to try to provide the best services at the best rate for our citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 18, Regional Streetlight Procurement Program from the DVRPC.
Resolution number 2123, 2019, Regional Streetlight Procurement Program, DBRPC, motion to authorize cooperative purchasing and participation in the Regional Streetlight Procurement Program administered by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. Motion to authorize the township manager to execute all professional services agreements for the streetlight design and project management with Keystone Lighting Solutions as part of the township's participation in the Regional Streetlight Procurement Program administered by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, subject to review of documents by the township solicitor.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion, any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 19, Preliminary/Final Land Development for Linwood School.
Chairman, I'd like to adopt resolution 2125, 2019, approving the preliminary final land development for Haverford School District, Linwood Elementary School, the property located at 1400 Lawrence Road, Haverford, Havertown, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio number 21-01-00828-00, has been submitted to construct a new elementary school, athletic fields, parking area, and playground. Existing school is to be razed. The subject property is zoned INS, institutional, and is located in the first ward. The after-set plans were prepared by Gilmore and Associates Incorporated Engineering Consulting Services, Lionhorn, PA, dated September 28, 2018, and last revised on January 7, 2019, subject to compliance of the recommendations of the planning commission.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. Is there any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 10, Traffic, Second Reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-5, 2019, amending and supplementing Chapter 58 Building Construction, Article 1 Building Code, Section 58-2B, additions, deletions, and modifications, and Article 2 Property Maintenance Code, Section 58-3A, adoption of standards and modification of standards.
We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any discussion, any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item number 13, Appointment of a New Emergency Management Coordinator.
Motion to adopt resolution 2017, 2019, appointing Jonathan Alderson to serve on a shade tree commission for a five-year term that expired December 31, 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any other nominations?
President, I'd like to make.
And one, two thousand nineteen, ALC twenty-five yard tow behind leaf vacuum collector from H.A. DeHartenson, three eleven Crown Point Road, Thoroughfare, New Jersey, under Pennsylvania Co-Stars, number twenty-five dash zero fifty-two, in the amount of seventy-two thousand sixty-nine dollars.
Second.
I think we're gonna do them collectively.
Sanitation Department, one, two thousand, one twenty twenty international harvester, six oh seven cabin chassis for sanitation truck from GL Ser International, one twenty Industrial Way, Conshohocken, Pennsylvania, under Pennsylvania Co-Stars contract, twenty-five dash seventeen, in the amount of one hundred thousand seven hundred nine dollars and sixty cents. One twenty 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 yard sanitation body rear loader from Grand Turk Equipment, one Spookel Parkway, Bridgeport, Pennsylvania, under Co-Stars contract twenty-five dash forty-six, in the amount of seventy-six thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Nine hundred thirty-two gallons blue recycle bins with drain holes, nine hundred lids and nine hundred custom logos from TMF Corporation, eight hundred and fifty, eight fifty Westchester Pike, Haverford, Pennsylvania, in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion, any questions? Please call a roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda item number twenty-two, Contract Awards for Gas and Oil.
I'll make a motion to award the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, eighty-seven octane gas contract to Petroleum Traders Corporation, Fort Wayne, Indiana, in the amount of one dollar sixty-four cents and fifteen one hundreds, fifteen thousands per gallon, submitting the lowest responsible bid. Also, a motion to award the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, number two fuel oil contract to Petroleum Traders Corporation, Fort Wayne, Indiana, in the amount of two dollars twenty-two cents and nineteen thousand per gallon, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda item number thirteen is a continuation of two thousand nineteen appointments, the first being Cable TV Advisory Board. I don't know that we've had any candidates, candidates at this point for that one vacancy. If not, I would entertain a motion to table.
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Wexler, seconded by Commissioner McGarrett. Please call a roll to table.
Yes. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Second appointment is to the Shade Tree Commission, a five-year term.
Chairman?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Making a motion to appoint Jonathan Alderson to serve on the Shade Tree Commission for a five-year term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oliva, and any other nominations?
President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ryan Hurlinger to serve on the Shade Tree Commission for a five-year term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second. And by Commissioner McCloskey, any other nominations? Okay, if you could please state your preference, I recall the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Mr. Alderson.
Mr. Oliva?
Mr. Alderson?
Mr. McCloskey?
Mr. Alderson.
Mr. Siegel?
Mr. Alderson.
McGarrett?
Mr. Albertson.
Dr. Hart?
Mr. Hurlinger.
Mr. Wexler?
Mr. Alderson.
Mr. Holmes?
Uh, Mr. President, because I missed the interviews, I'm going to abstain.
And Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Alderson. Congratulations to Mr. Alderson, I think he's not here, but he'll be a great addition to the Shade Tree Commission. Vote was what, seven?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven to one.
Seven to one, okay. Uh, next is Environmental Advisory Committee, two-year term, Ward four and Ward six, do we have any, any appointments by?
Yes, Mr. President, I've appointed Melissa Romano to serve on the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Commissioner, you get that, Melissa Romano. Uh, Ward six?
Uh, Mr. President, I am reappointing Robert Graff to serve on the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Great. That does not require a vote, they're individual appointments made by each Ward Commissioner. Uh, next is the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, one-year term, Ward one, four, six, and eight. Do we have any?
I'm having a meeting on the twenty-seventh, so I'll go to table mine.
Okay.
President?
Mr. Siegel?
I appoint Mark Cohen to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
Commissioner Siegel? Mr. Holmes?
Uh, Mr. President, I reappoint Andy Antonio to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
Andy Antonio?
Yes.
Thank you, and more.
Uh, Ann, not me.
I'm sorry, Ann. Okay, thanks. Sorry. Commissioner Hart?
I'll table.
Are you okay for, okay, next month? Okay, agenda item number twenty-four is a continuation of the citizens forum for any non-agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any subject that's not on the agenda? Or was, I'm sorry?
Any topic.
Or any topic, yeah, or any topic. Okay. Thank you. Uh, is there any new business? I did ask, I guess I could put this under new business, I did ask, we did host the Seventh Annual Philadelphia Western Suburbs Trail Summit this past weekend, hosted by Haverford Township at the Crack, and also hosted by the Friends of Haverford Trails. And I've asked our Assistant Township Manager and Rec Director, Tim Denny, just to give us a summary of how that went and the takeaways. Thank you.
Commissioner, as Andy said, we did host the Seventh Annual Trail Summit. It's a great thing for Haverford Township, it's a great thing for our building. The purpose of the summit is to bring together people, leaders from the surrounding communities, and try to learn from each other, encourage each other, and then see where we collaborate. Because a lot of what's going on in the trails is looking at how we can collaborate with Marple, Lower Marion, Springfield, all the surrounding townships, Upper Darby. So, it was a, it was a very positive, successful day. We had Commissioner Wexler join us, and Commissioner Hart, so I appreciate them coming out. The whole concept was to take a look at the big picture, the first half of the day was to look at the big picture. We had representatives from the Bicycle Coalition, from DVRPC, from the Delaware County Planning Commission, and then also from Pennsylvania DCNR, representative for our area. And part of that was because what these grant funders are looking for is collaboration. They're looking for municipalities to work together and to figure out how these projects can help connect the different communities, with the multiple reasons, not the least of which is to try to help with traffic issues. So, that's what the grant people are looking for, so we invited some of them to come. I want to give a shout out to Peter Puglioneese and Rich Kerr, who are great partners and work with us on this. As some of you may know, not only was Bill and Jerry with us, but we had elected officials, Mayor Mcozy from Upper Darby, a number of commissioners from Marple, Springfield, and Newtown Township were also there, and Radner. So, it was a very successful day, and, um, just in quick summary, Haverford Township, because of our geographical position, three of the major potential trails go right through Haverford Township. On the one side is the Valley Forge, the Refuge Trail, which runs along Cobb's. Again, it's very conceptual at this point, but would be a huge undertaking and, and very positive thing if it happens. And then right through the center of town here, the old railroad trail, the Penzi Trail, or the old Newtown Square branch, DCNR is very interested in that because of its connectivity possibilities. And then all the way on the western side of the township, the Darby Creek Trail, same idea, Upper Darby has just finished their feasibility study to show how that could connect. So, Haverford Township is not only seen as a leader in trails, this is our, we celebrated our tenth year, if some of you were in this picture, you may remember from, Bill, I think you were there, and I know a couple, Steve and Mario were in this picture ten years ago. So, Haverford Township is seen as a leader, but not only that, but we are situated in a way that really makes us key to a lot of these things. So, it was a great day, and for those of you who are the Community Recreation Environmental Center, we really felt was certainly living up to its mission, because it was jam-packed that day, every room in the building was full, people from the age of two to ninety-two, from seniors doing yoga, walking the track, to young kids on the basketball court, to our fitness center, and then the, the environmental part, the, the trail summit was, was very well attended, and we got a lot of very positive feedback, not only from residents, but especially people from other communities, saying how they, how much they admired what Haverford Township has accomplished in the past ten years. So, it was a great day, and a great day for the township, so.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Denny? Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Now, we'll turn, anybody else have new business? That will go to Commissioner D'Amelio with other, other business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm hosting a, my regular first ward community meeting, which will be attended by special guest State Representative Mike Zabel, who's our new state representative. We'll be discussing topics like the trails, and I want to thank Tim and his leadership with, including for the Friends of the, of the trails, and Peter Puglioneese for all the hard work they're doing with that Westgate Trail, that certainly is a challenge, and hopefully we'll get it completed. I think we're gonna begin, work on that again in March, I believe, Tim? Is that correct? April, April. I was also told by my colleague, Commissioner Siegel, that Dion Leach's office sent us an email relating to four seventy-six in Westchester Pike, I have not read that yet, but we will be discussing that and bringing State Representative Mike Zabel up to speed with that as well. And we'll also be discussing, we talked a lot about transparency in this meeting, and one of the reasons why I tabled that two seventeen Wallon Hill Lane was because I wanted to be transparent with the neighborhood and let them know what was happening there, and that's the only reason why we, why I did that. But, um, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Oliva?
All right, I just wanted to thank the school district again for, I didn't, I didn't say anything before about it, but I, I just wanted to thank the school board for, for the property over at Brookline, could have been a disaster over there for us, with traffic, and you had the, the forward thinking, so that we would, you know, so that the residents would have a nice, nice place there, and that we could, we could use that place for either a library or open space, so I appreciate that, I know my residents appreciate it a lot too, so I just wanted to let you guys know that, that we, we appreciate it, and that we appreciate the, the, the communication back and forth that has, that has happened over the last year or two, we, we do. Thank you very much.
You? Commissioner McCloskey?
Sure. Just the first thing I want to announce is, as I've mentioned at a couple prior meetings, on Wednesday, January twentieth, two thousand nineteen, we've invited PennDOT officials here. Or, did I say January, sorry, February twentieth, two thousand nineteen, next Wednesday, in this building, in this room, we've invited PennDOT and contractors who are working on the project for the Ardmore Avenue Bridge to attend, they'll give a presentation, and there'll be a question and answer session with residents. Commissioner Siegel and Commissioner Lewis are also gonna be there hosting it with myself, but obviously, it will affect many residents, not just in our particular ward, so if you have questions or concerns, I encourage you to attend, we'll have the walls pulled back, and hopefully we can get a lot of residents to show up, and ask whatever questions they have. As we've said a couple times though, it's a very similar project to the College Avenue Bridge construction, and we're very hopeful that PennDOT and the contractors have lessons learned, lessons were learned in the, in the problems that led to delays for the College Avenue Bridge, so we're hopeful that this project meets the requirements that they have, and is constructed quickly and timely so that residents can start to use it. We also have members of the Police Department present, who will discuss the detours that are being assigned by PennDOT, and any precautions that we're gonna take as a township. Again, it's not our project, but we're gonna take precautions within the neighborhoods of my ward, and Commissioner Lewis and Commissioner Siegel's ward, to make sure that it doesn't have any undue impact on the residents. Second thing I'd like, just like to talk about is, in between our two votes on, on taking that Brookline School, part of what arose and part of what created a stir in the community was some of the tenants of that building and their search for, for new location. And I think that's been discussed at, at length, but it does raise the issue of, sort of, of childhood early education that exists within this township, and that means daycare, that means preschool, that means kindergarten wraparound, that means aftercare, that means beforecare, and the reality is that part of why our property values keep going up in this town is because individuals are moving into town, and a lot of them have kids, and a lot of them have two parents that work. And the reality is, we don't have sufficient childcare or early education facilities within town to meet the needs of, of this community. So, from a township's perspective, the way, after going through, through all of this with a lot of the residents and talking to many people, some of whom were represented by the parent group that spoke tonight, as a township, I think we need to look at it as an economic development opportunity, okay? So, we have, we have businesses that right now would come into town if the space was available and the space was zoned correctly, and open a business. Personally, I have, my, I've been paying a daycare preschool bill for the last nine years, and that preschool daycare is located in Ardmore. It's because there's not that many available options. There's certainly some, and the ones that are, I'm, I'm not downgrading, but they're all full, and there's all wait lists. And part of the urgency that was stirred up in parents, and the fear that was stirred up in parents, is that those signups occur in February. They, they occur in February because that's the demand. The demand is, they can charge you a deposit in February to not come until next September. So, I really think in our comprehensive plan meetings, in our zoning board meetings, not the zoning board meetings themselves, in our zoning board committee meetings, we need to look at this in terms of an economic development opportunity that we as a board can encourage these businesses and work with these businesses to see what they need in terms of zoning accommodations, but also locations, that locations that would be attractive to parents. So, something for, for future.
Could I just, I just, there's, there's some buildings here that, in the township, that, that we need to rezone, because they, there's nothing that's gonna go into some of these places, that, so we need to, like, I, I'm just agreeing with you in saying that we need to, to look to the future and, and, and change our code to allow that.
Right, so I, I just think what happened with the Brookline School, we did the absolute right thing in taking that property, it was the absolute right move for that neighborhood, and it will be the absolute right move to preserve that open space, or build a community center, or build a library, whatever we do, and we'll do that with public participation. But I think one of the lessons we can learn from this process is an opportunity for the township, and one that would assist a, a lot of residents.
Points well taken, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Siegel?
Yeah, I, I want to address a couple of things first. Commissioners McCloskey, Hart, and I will be having a constituent meeting in this room on March twentieth, at seven PM. As we go into the winter, the later winter, we see potholes, we see a lot of issues. Please remember that most of the roads where you have potholes are, in fact, state roads that we are not able to perform any repairs on. There is a website for PennDOT where you can report what they call a concern, but almost every road where I've been receiving complaints about is not a township road, the township is typically out there repairing our streets very quickly. A, a separate issue that's come up is that in the last month or so, at the border of Commissioner McCloskey and my ward, Hillcrest and Eagle at the intersection with the YMCA, we've received, I've received, I can't speak for Commissioner McCloskey, a number of complaints about the installation of the no-turn-on-red signal. And if I could, I'd just like Chief Viola to explain why this, why the signs were put there, their purpose, so that you can hear it from the police who were behind this.
Thank you, Commissioner. We, we had, did a study up, done a study up there in the past, because obviously we know the traffic issues on Eagle Road. We had a pedestrian struck, struck up there in the past six months, we had two near misses because of the, the lack of no-turn-on-red signs. What we found was cars were coming into the intersection, while Eagle Road still had the green light, which was backing up traffic even worse and blocking the box. And then the vehicle operators were not obeying the no, the, allowing the turn before the signs are up, when the crosswalk was, was allowing pedestrians to cross. So, when the pedestrians were crossing, they were encountering vehicles in the, into the intersection. So, with that, we did another survey on the intersection, we contact, contacted PennDOT, they agreed with our recommendation, and we then asked the, had the ordinance passed and put the no-turn-on-red signs up at all four corners.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel? Commissioner McGarrett?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank everyone who came here and spoke on the Brookline School issue, and we'll get more into that at a later date. I have some answers, some questions for some of the comments made here tonight, but I'm not gonna keep you from the snow that's gonna come outside. Basically, I, I'd like to congratulate Patrolman Jimmy Jones, Lieutenant Scott, and Sergeant Coleman on their promotions, also, all the police officers who came in support of their fellow officers that came here tonight, along with Chief Viola and Chief, Deputy Chief Hagan. Also, I'd like to, drawing a blank, I better shut up.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be.
For coming, everybody.
It's gotta be Grange related, maybe it's Grange related.
That's it for tonight.
Commissioner Hart?
So, I just want to echo other commissioners in thanking the school board and the school district in cooperating with us. I think we were able to preserve an open space, it's a small park, but we've got to preserve whatever area we can. The library is, has contacted their architects to develop, show us a proposal for a plan that, hopefully that'll be available in the next coming months, and we can get community input on that and make some decisions from there. And again, the, we will be having a meeting here, March twentieth, Commissioners McCloskey and Siegel and I, certainly that'll be a, a topic for discussion, and also the Manoa Road closure during the summer, we'll get updates on that.
Andy, it just came back to me.
Okay, is it, is it the Grange?
Chris Connell for coming tonight, of course, he's over at Brookline School, and Chris Connell for coming tonight, of course, he's over at Brookline School, and his, his presentation was basically about open space and recreation, and I just want you to know I'm in total agreement with Chris on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart.
Thanks for moving that out.
Commissioner Wexler.
I'd also like to extend my congratulations to our Police Department. It's a great day for them. You can tell by the enthusiasm and the amount of attendees, and how big an evening it was for them and for their colleagues. So congratulations to all of them for the professionalism that they showed to us. I'd also, again, like to thank the school district, and then also echo some of what Commissioner McCloskey said. I too think it is an economic development issue. While we're not going to go out and look at specific ground and change zoning in certain areas, I think what we need to do is encourage businesses to look at properties and make those requests through the channels. And we need to look in a more critical eye towards the economic development of the township. So I think that's a great suggestion, that we keep an open mind, just because it's currently zoned, something that was put back in the 19, early 1900s, and we've been stuck with it. And I've got a, one of my examples I always use is the intersection of Eagle Road and Westchester Pike, where the, the coffee shop is. There's a driveway there where people come over the Pike and make an immediate left turn and block traffic on Westchester Pike. When I've inquired about it, I was told it was grandfathered, but it was grandfathered as a gas station, not as, not as a Starbucks coffee station, causing accidents to back up into Westchester Pike. So I think we need to take a real critical eye on some of the properties and, and how we've categorized them and zoned them so, to restrict usage. So I think, Commissioner McCloskey, that's a great suggestion, and I think all of us need to keep an open eye and open ear for that. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Hart.
McGarrett got to go again.
Okay.
A follow-up, because Manoa Road is going to be closed during the summer, we will not be able to close Caracung Drive. It's got to stay open for traffic, so we're not going to be able to close it on Sundays.
Vice President.
Mr. President, thanks. I have, I, just three things to discuss. Number one, we're live now, so Harford Township School District has a two-hour delay tomorrow morning for everybody who is watching on TV right now. I just saw that come up and got a call about my son's.
You didn't even know that, did you, Larry?
So.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks to the school board if they made that call. The, the second thing, I have to, I have to talk about a very, very special constituent in the sixth ward. I'll try to do this without getting emotional, but 18 years ago tonight, at the stroke of midnight, Annie Gilmore Holmes came into the world, and I wrote once about her. Goldfish only grow big enough for the bowl we keep them in. bonsai trees with careful pruning never leave their pots. How I wish I could have kept you little, but how unfair to the world it would have been to confine you to us. Happy, happy, happy birthday to my princess royal cuteness, from your King Wallet. Happy birthday, Annie. This is also a week, in addition to birthdays in our family, my birthday, my, my wife's birthday, Annie's birthday, our dog's birthday, this is the week that, this is the week of Valentine's Day. And for a lot of us, Valentine's Day is a very fun day, it's candy, it's cards. There are 17 families in America for whom Valentine's Day will never, ever be the day that the rest of us enjoy, and I'm going to say their names. Alyssa Aladev, she was 14. Scott Beagle was 35. Martin Duke was 14. Nicholas Dorrett was 17. Aaron Feis was 37. Jamie Gutenberg was 14. Chris Hickson was 49. Luke Hoyer was 15. Kara Laffren was 14. Gina Montalto was 14. Joaquin Oliver was 17. Elena Petty was 14. Meadow Pollock was 18. Alina Ramsey was 17. Alex Schacter was 14. Carmen Shentrup was 16, and Peter Wang was 15. Those 17 people died last Valentine's Day in the Parkland shooting. In November of 2018, the NRA backed 140 candidates for federal and for statewide offices, and while 30 of them did not get elected, 110 of them did. Now, on this anniversary of the most tragic school shooting that we've had in America, we all have to remember how we felt a year ago. We all have to remember how we felt 11 months ago, and 10 months ago, and nine months ago, and not let the other things that are constantly bombarding us from this current government, and remember what we felt last year, and carry that fire into the future, and stop the NRA, and stop gun school shootings, and change our country's obsession with violence and with guns. That is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. I just have one update, just to add to what Commissioner McCloskey said about the Ardmore Avenue Bridge closure. I attended the pre-construction meeting in late January with our Chief of Police and Deputy Chief, and our Public Works Director, and our Deputy Public Works Director at PennDOT Headquarters in King of Prussia. This was on pre-construction of the Ardmore Avenue Bridges. There are actually two bridges, one over the rail line, and then one over Cobb's Creek. Some good news is that there, there's a new contractor. It's not the same contractor as College Avenue. That was a project that was seven months behind schedule, and of course, not, not all of that was the fault of the contractor, some of that falls on PennDOT for not having the utilities moved prior to closing College Avenue, so. But there is a new contractor, this ward is a low responsible bidder at $9,837,000, a company called J.D. Ekman. And I understand, I talked to one of their engineers during the meeting, and a couple people afterwards. Ekman apparently enjoys a pretty good reputation in the bridge, bridge construction business. And let's hope they, they do a good job on Ardmore Avenue Bridges. The other piece of good news is that we did ask PennDOT and heard from, there are a lot of stakeholders at the meeting, including representatives from utilities, and Verizon, and Comcast, and Aqua, and so forth. And PennDOT is committed to, to not close Ardmore Avenue. They made a firm commitment to, to not do anything until all the utilities were moved, and that was a mistake, and that was probably, cost us about six or seven months' delay in, in the reopening of the, the College Avenue Bridge. We expect that the Ardmore Avenue will close sometime to traffic in mid-June of 2019, and reopen, I think this is kind of an optimistic timeframe, but they're, they're saying 2020, reopening it in 2020. And there is liquidity, the damages assessed against the contractor, if Ardmore Avenue is not reopened within 380 days from the start of construction. So there is, we have some incentives in the right place, which is good. The disappointing news that we heard was that the, it's not going to be a reconfiguration or an update of the Ardmore Avenue and Harford Road intersection. I thought that was part of the project. We were hoping there'd be an adaptive traffic signal, which is a signal that has video cameras attached to it and monitors traffic real time, and adjusts traffic accordingly to where the traffic is. Unfortunately, PennDOT didn't see it that way. They said it, unlike College Avenue, where the intersection was on top of the bridge, the intersection here is about 50 yards from the bridge, so they didn't want to take on that, that redoing of the, or upgrading that intersection, which is unfortunate, because it just makes logical sense to do it all at the same time. So that was, we tried to convince them otherwise, but the bid had already been put out, so it is a bridge-only project, not a redo of the, of the intersection. Although I did talk to our Township Manager about applying for a grant for an adaptive traffic signal at that intersection. So if we get that intersection, we'd have Eagle, Eagle and Harford Road, right? What would be all the, basically go all the way to Brenmore Avenue, right?
That's correct. We, we were told, I think the chief confirmed it, that Landover and Harford, College and Harford, and then Ardmore and Harford, once we get that done, and then the next one would be, Lynnwood and Harford.
So do we actually apply for that grant yet, or?
We have not, we're waiting for the early grants to go out. Once they go out, then myself and Mr. Pernoni apply for them.
For that, for that intersection, right?
Yes, we've been very successful with those grants, so I'm, we're optimistic.
Okay. And then what about updating the pedestrian crosswalk? Is that something we can, is that something you can petition PennDOT for, or?
Ardmore Avenue?
Yeah, I mean.
We would look at it, and we would petition.
It needs, it needs some upgrades in terms of the pedestrian crosswalk? Chief, I don't know what the steps are with PennDOT.
I, I looked at that again after we had the conversation, after the meeting, that there's, would need some considerable work to add. There is no crosswalk, dedicated crosswalk lights there, and I believe that's a complete, they corrected for wrong, complete upgrade of that traffic light box to add those. Yeah, so the only thing, they have two, you had asked me about those two traffic lights that face the crosswalk, they only face Ardmore Avenue on one side and Harford Road on the other. So we'd have to look at it to see, in fact, we could do crosswalk lighting in that intersection.
Okay, if we could study it, I think it'd be.
Yes.
Worth looking at. Thank you, Chief. And that is all I have. Anybody else have any other business? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you all. I'm sorry, Larry Feinberg from, yes, come on. Larry Feinberg, our, the president of the Harford School District, would like to make a remark or two.
Well, very much, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for both of the votes this evening, you know, transferring Brookline, and also the approval for the Lynnwood School. We're very excited to get that project underway. Our Superintendent, Dr. Roushi, is out of town at a professional meeting, but I know she would also want to pass along those thanks. And I would like to single out Township Manager Gentoli and Dr. Roushi for their work together on both of these projects. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
It's good to have the channel open, and we look forward to continuing to work together for the betterment of our township and, and all our citizens, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Okay, no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.